Thank you, I want to welcome everyone to our September 12 council meeting. Please note the councils in attendance except for Ms. Solis who's absent. The first item on our agenda is items from council. You guys have anything to bring up or request? Okay, seeing none, we'll move into citizens communication. So, any citizen that would like to come up and talk about anything at all, please just state your name and address for the record. And then if you could, try to limit your comments to at least five minutes. So, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Is this working?
I think so.
Oh, I didn't come here to complain. I just had a, I know you can't answer back to me, but you can listen to my concerns. One of them is everywhere I go, I see a mountain of tree limbs. I know you hired an outside firm to start somewhere cleaning it up, and I'm sure they're here somewhere. But I have no, my daughter told me, "You better get your stuff out by the street because they'll be here in no time." Well, everybody I see now is asking, "Where are they cleaning up?" I don't see anything happening other than individuals hauling it theirself or hiring somebody to haul it. So what I'm asking is that somebody on, somebody on city council report to the paper or the TV or somehow the progress of this trash, so we'll have some kind of idea. I don't care when mine, when mine goes, I have a mountain, okay? But I know eventually I'll wake up and it'll be gone. All right, the next thing is permits. I know that city council, after a week of the storm, canceled issuing permit or charging for permits that had to do with, with Hurricane Harvey. All right, what I'm asking council is to back up, back up and catch all of, all of permits issued for hurricane damage from Harvey and reimburse those homeowners that did pay for permits to have, have, have their work done. I'll give you an example. Across the street from me, two houses, one of them happens to be my brother, the other one a good friend, they couldn't be here tonight to speak for theirself. But a tree fell down and took out both power cables from the transformer through their houses. And doing that, it, it pulled a meter loop down and ripped the top out of the meter box. Okay. We happen to have electrician working across the street at house from Cuero. Great guy. He come over, told us what we need to do, and, and he could fix it. The first he had to get a permit from the city for a hundred dollars. Okay? So that's fine, let's just add it to the price. Okay. I assume that he went and got a permit from the city for a hundred dollars for each house, and he did that, and he fixed it. Did a beautiful job. That evening, he worked till dark to get us ready to be hooked back up. All right, now here's the kicker. Inspector came out and inspected the work. And, and I'm gonna call this nitpicking, I don't want to call it something else. There was nothing wrong with the bottom of the switch box, I, I don't know if any of you even know you have a ground rod coming from your main breaker box. All right, he wouldn't approve the work because he didn't know how long our, our, our ground rod was in those two houses. So rather than argue about it, we had to call electrician the next day back from Cuero to drive us a, a eight-foot ground rod by this perfectly good ground rod that's already there. Anybody could see that the wires, the conduit wasn't damaged, wires were hooked up. Now I call that nitpicking. And I, and I think that in times like this, common sense ought to prevail over something like that. All right, oh. I had, I had something else here, if I could see what it is. I know I'm taking too much time.
It's okay.
All right, I want to talk about water a little bit. Water, to everybody, is, is as important as the blood that runs through your body. You have to have it. And some reason, our water, our water supply got polluted. I don't know why, I heard rumors. Somebody is at fault for our water. I know that, I know the, the backup system failed, and, and I've heard, I'm not going to repeat the rumors I had, but somebody, this council and city management owes the city of this, the city, a explanation, not a candy-coated one, not one to make people look good, but the truth of what happened to our water supply. It should never happen again. Our sewer kept working, everybody that showed up here to work on electricity, and, I mean, they did a yeoman duty. I, I take my hats off to them guys. This, this, this city was in bad shape. And I'd like to compliment them. I seen kids, kids helping out people. I seen old people from out of town. One group, the average age is seventy years old, up in them trees, clearing, clearing stuff off of people's houses. All right, now, I know you have priorities, okay? And, and I know money's tight, but there's a couple of things that I can think of, and I could probably think of twenty things, that where there's some money available. And one of them is Riverside Golf Course. I love Riverside Golf Course. I played golf there for fifty years. I was on the board of directors for two terms, and I love it. But, but that's not a priority. That's a half a million dollars y'all ponied up out there, and you could, you could jerk that money out of there. If Riverside Golf Course stays down for two years, this city's not going to collapse. Another thing is sports complex. Everybody's grapping about the scoreboard's not working. Good Lord, I come from a place where they used to have kids standing up there with a, with a number, hold a number up to give the score. Okay, I know we're not there anymore, but there's, that's two places that you can, you can grab some money to, to spend on getting this city running again. And I appreciate, I appreciate the opportunity to come talk to you.
Oh, no, forgive me for interrupting you. We need your name, can we, your name and address for the record is required.
Buck Hawes, H A W E S. I reside at nineteen oh five Mistletoe, Victoria, Texas, seven seven nine oh one, and I've lived in that residence for like fifty-four years. Thank you all very much.
Okay, and you're always welcome to come and speak, Mr. Hawes. And if you'll stay a few minutes after everyone speaks, we might be able to answer a couple of questions, okay?
Well, I, I gotta go because my eyesight doesn't allow me to drive at night. I'm, I have to get off the street, but.
Okay.
But I appreciate the opportunity to come, come talk. I hate to complain.
It's okay.
But I, I just had all these things on my mind, okay?
We appreciate you taking time to talk to us. Okay, citizens communication still open? And name and address for the record, please?
My name is Benjamin Desi Lopez, and I reside at two zero zero two and one half southwest Ben Jordan, which is located very close to the code enforcement buildings, the new park buildings, the new Adoree business. We, we have a lot of businesses around, but we only have three residences on my street. My mom's house, my house, and a private nurse. We have the Texas feed store that got the roof torn off, the Conoco, you know, no damage there. But I just wanted to give thanks to the city of Victoria because we were ready for this. It went, in twenty-four hours, it went from a tropical storm to something so severe that it got our mayor Paul Palaski on CNN. And Parkway Church's very proud of that for some reason. But I mean, the way things came together at HEB feeding people, Christ Kitchen opening up, and the abundance of donations that are coming in, you know, I got to see all of my neighbors' backyards for the first time because fences fell down, you know, and my dog was just going in and out, checking out that cat, this dog, and by the grace of God, she didn't do no damage to no dogs because my dog's a dingo, Australian shepherd, and when we go down to the hill, sometimes she comes back with, I hate to say it, Bambi's thigh, and you know, maybe a vulture bone or turtle shell, and, you know, she amazes me because she's, she's like my red healer, and she heals me when I'm stressed, and I, I walk a lot. You know, that's why I have a doctor for, a podiatrist now in the Podiatrist Association, and, you know, I'm getting corns, I'm getting blisters, but I'm enjoying walking and praying with the community. We stop, we move brushes together. I got the pleasure of giving Mrs. Scott some ice, you know, at the community center when we were doing the ice, and, you know, my pastor Abel from Solid Rock, the tarp had went off that, you know, Saturday, Friday, and I don't know what day it was because it kind of blended together, but next thing I know, he was yelling, and the tarp was pulling him and his helper off of the roof, and I said, "Hey, could you use my weight?" She started laughing, and I climbed up that ladder, and, you know, we got the job done, and the church had minimal damage. But I, I won't lie, being in solitude for those three days, from Friday to Sunday, I kind of felt like I was at police, Jeep, Craig County Jail again, and it, and it got, it got hectic in my mind, but I painted my whole room. I mean, I got murals up there that I'm gonna do on a show in San Antonio at the end of the month, and, you know, things have been moving really fast, and I'm trying to slow down. I've had my golf pen run-ins, I've had to go to citizens and D-TAR, but they were just mental health checks. Because going to the hospital instead of going into the system again saves the city a lot of money and resources. And the best birthday present I got, Saturday morning, I woke up at the convent to go to Mass at six thirty, and they said, "Hey, go to our later sorrows, they're having a breakfast with the senator from San Benito, you know, down in the valley where your grandpa's from." And I'd been dreaming about breaking bread with those city manager, and few of you haven't yet. And by the grace of God, I, I got there early, and I was helping a gentleman set up the tables, and I didn't even know it was the senator. And he just says, "Who are you?" And I said, "I'm Mr. Lopez, I'm here just doing what I do. Am I allowed to smoke here?" He goes, "Yeah, but smoke your cigars over there, what, cigarettes." I did, and I humbly sat down with him, and here comes city manager, and here comes Josie, and I'll sit down with Manny Alvarez, and he used to be my city councilman that I used to talk to because his son goes to Riverside Baptist. I almost wanted to cry. To me, that was my birthday breakfast. You know, like I said, my problem is my family, they're the ones who triggered me, but the city doesn't. The parks, when I go and lay in a park, I let peace, I let the wind blow through my, whatever hair I got, you know? But I pray, like I still start my day at six thirty here, and now I found a new church where every day I can go and have Bible study at night, so six thirty, six thirty, I'm thanking God for what he did so we could come together and rebuild and replace some things that needed to be gone. Mother Nature did a lot of churches favors with their old shacks and little things that now they can get some help rebuilding and doing things properly. Have no complaints because God's will was being done. And I thank all of you for, for seeing the things that we do need. And yes, our priorities, golf is golf. You know, I went out there and I already played Riverside Park, I shot a two hundred and twenty-two. I mean, I didn't complain, I had fun. You know, but it, it, it's a difficult life being a child sports psychologist because I look at everything as a game. I don't look at everything as confrontation. And as soon as someone starts getting hurt, it's not a game no more, and it's not fun. And I'm just walking the city, I said contractors are asking me for resources and who to send, and I'm just blessed. I'm blessed to have a home in Victoria City, and this mainland is, I'm getting used to it. The Gulf of Mexico I never liked, but Pacific Basin's nice. I do thank the city of Victoria, this county of Victoria, and all the people who are coming to help us. America sometimes doesn't blend together too well, but I know I've done my part to make myself a service to all of you. And maybe now it can start benefiting just by the resources of being of service to Victoria. And once again, I thank you all for being here. I thank us all for surviving that hurricane. I call it Harvey Wallbanger because my walls were banging and, you know, I had a good time. But once again, I, I'm so blessed to see all of you. I'm blessed to see everyone who attended the meeting tonight because we do need to stick together and recover together. Not have pet peeves, if somebody needs help, help them. Electrician, plumber, a carpenter, you see your neighbor needs help, help them. I mean, I know I'm supposed to get too biblical, but I do have a fellow member of my church here, and we, we pray for everybody. They don't just pray for us, they don't just pray, you know, and I'm just humbly thanking you guys for doing what you do. I do what I do, and sometimes I'm not sure how I do it, but job gets done. And I know you're gonna do the job, and Victoria's gonna be great again. So thank you for letting me chat out.
Hey, Desi. Citizens communication still open?
Thank you for this opportunity. See some friendly or familiar faces up there, and I appreciate all the work that you guys do. I'm proud of my council member.
Name and address for the record. I know we know you, but.
Dang it. My name is Rick Colley, live at three oh five Beechwood in Tanglewood, here in the city. Been there for about twenty-six years. What I need to talk about is the proposed renovation of Ben Wilson Street. I drive that street pretty much every day, sometimes twice a day. It's not the only way to work, I work at Citizens Medical Center, so it's about less than two miles that I have to drive every day, so that's, that's pretty easy. Ben Wilson, I think would, has, this is an opportunity to really dress up that end of town, which is my end of town, what I use to commute, back and forth to work, and a lot of people use that street. The influence that the UHB has on this part of town, I think, is something we need to grasp and take advantage of. I remember years ago, many years ago, a graduate professor of mine asked us, "What is the purpose of a university?" And we were struggling to come up with the right answer, you know, it's improve knowledge, you know, exchange ideas, it's here for the students to learn a vocation, it's, it's here to increase knowledge base, the standard of living. Well, what he told us, the reason universities exist is to improve the quality of life. That pretty much addresses everything. That's the students, that's the teachers, the professors, the people who live in the community of the university, and if you look around, you know that's actually true. The influence of a university on a city is something we need to take advantage of and prize and cherish. I've seen it firsthand at Texas Tech University where I did some graduate work, major university. Lubbock is much larger than Victoria, Texas Tech is much larger than UHB. I've seen it at West Texas State University in Canyon, Amarillo College in Amarillo, and most of you have similar experiences, but the influence that a, a university or a college has over the city is, is something very, very valuable. It's like nothing else. It improves the quality of life for the residents and everyone on here. It dresses up our end of town, it makes things look nice, that's just what you see on the surface. But the demographic input that you get from the quality of people that are teachers, that are students, the, the retailers, the merchants, the people, it lifts everything, and we prize, like our property values, we all prize our property values. It increases property values, we know that. Those are kind of the tangible aspects, but I think dressing up Ben Wilson would be a big step in that direction. We're not going to impede traffic. Street's only a quarter mile long or something like that, you got five lanes, speed limit's forty, knocking it down to thirty-five or twenty-five's not gonna hurt anything. Have something that looks nice with, that blends in with the university influence, I think is something we need to, need to take advantage of, so that's my input. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Armstrong, one oh five Creekside. About forty-something years ago, I was on a bus. We were going down to Kingsville to ask the coordinating board to give us a upper level university. Got off the bus, went in the restroom, was in there for a little bit, my zipper broke on my new suit. Time went by, I was working on that zipper. P.K. Stubblefield, Mr. Stubblefield to me, he was president of the banking trust, came in and said, "Hurry up, hurry up, it's only two minutes, it's gonna start." And I said, "My zipper's broken." He said, "I'd get down there and help you, but if somebody walked through that door, they'd throw us out of here." Anyway, we got what we wanted. We got an upper level university. Well, about thirty-something years passed, and we wanted a four-year institution, and we asked for it. And we were met with less than an enthusiastic crowd, especially Walcom Wilson, who was the chairman of the Board of Regents, and sort of flippantly with a, I think, smirk on his face a little bit, he said, "Well, if the community could raise a hundred thousand dollars, I'd vote for it." Well, before that next weekend was over, Janie Lack had raised about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and Mr. Walcom Wilson had to vote for it, and he did, and we got our four-year institution. Well, a little while went by, and there were many in the community that weren't satisfied with the, the acceleration of the four-year university, and we went over to talk to Walcom Wilson. It was me and Bill Blanchard, Dale Fowler, and Judge Posey. And Walcom Wilson told us that they weren't gonna do anything that would increase our expectations, increase the expectations of the community. And we left there not very happy. We were so unhappy that we explored the idea of changing the sponsorship of the university. And that didn't work out. But a couple of years ago, recently, everything changed. The university realizes now the potential of our community. They're spending unbelievable amounts of money in this community, they've bought property. They've, they've made a serious, serious commitment. And we've gotten everything we asked for. Now they're in a position to ask the city for something. And I, we're all business people or associated with business people, and we realize the value of what six thousand students would mean to this town and how it would change everything in the community. That's three, four times bigger than Caterpillar, and we bent over backwards and helped them, and they've, they've become fantastic citizens. But this is something that the university's asking of us, and I hope that y'all will see it in your hearts to grant them their wish, and I hope that this will be a six-oh vote to help them in every way we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Sorry I failed to recognize you at the beginning of the meeting. Thank you.
You're the mayor.
I understand. Thank you. So citizens communication still open? Anyone else? Another familiar face?
My name's Henry Guardo, I live at two oh six Milton. I've addressed the city council before. I think you know what my position is. My house backs up to Ben Wilson Street. I've, and I don't want to continue on that issue, but there is a lot of traffic, a lot of speeding traffic down there. I hope that the city council will make the right decision, slow the traffic down. But more importantly than that, let me tell you a little bit about myself. I was born here, my dad, my grandfather, my great-grandfather, my great-great-grandfather buried here. I, I love this town. And as I was a little kid, ten, eleven years old, I, I used to look, the only thing I had was a Texas map, highway map, and I'd look at that, and I clearly remember the population of Victoria back in the sixties. It was thirty-one thousand, then it went up to thirty-three, and then it went up to thirty-seven, forty-one, forty-three. And I kept on wondering, why is the lettering on Temple bigger than Victoria? Why is there a street map of Del Rio on the back of the map and not Victoria? I'm very proud of this town, but I want to see it grow. And I think here, council has an opportunity to do just that. We, you know what I do for a living, and I'm not gonna bring that up, but I'm gonna tell you that personally, I think Victoria is one of the slowest economic, slowest metropolitan areas in the state of Texas. Our unemployment rate's pretty high. We've counted out on oil and gas, and it's gone. We need to invest in diversity in industry, and I think education is just the way to go. I can just see this university growing, and I can see my kids and my grandchildren going to that university. I wish I could have. My parents raised four children, three of us finished college, a four-year university. I had to go out of town, I didn't have that opportunity. I'm asking you to invest in the growth in the future of Victoria and our children. People have come over here and spoken about what universities can bring to this community, and I think it's more than just economic development. It's, it's for the common good of the whole community and the Golden Crescent as a whole. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Guardo.
My name is Ron Walker, I live at twenty-two oh seven North Wheeler in Victoria. Lived in College Park for thirty-five years, I guess I moved there when I was twelve. But Dr. Hines will talk to you about why what UHB is proposing to you is important to Victoria College, because he'll get into specifics of that. But I want to talk a little bit more generally along the lines of some of what others have talked about. And two things I think set this city apart. One is the cooperation between public entities, and the second is a can-do spirit when it comes to improving the community and with economic development. As on the first topic of cooperation between public entities, I have said it publicly before, and I will say it right now. If it were not for the city of Victoria and city council, it's very unlikely that we would have the center we have out there across the street from Caterpillar. That was because of, some of you on, on, on the council, you gave us access to the property, and that allowed that wonderful development to happen. You did not have to do it, but you knew it was in the best interest of Victoria. And we, I think everyone will say, with these two entities working together, the college and the city, we've made a great improvement that helps a lot, that is very similar to what UHB is asking of you, to cooperate with them and improve this city. The Emerging Technology Center, I think, is a signing example of what can be done with cooperation between public entities, and it's, it's not a who does what, but it's what, what happens in the end. The likewise, I am extremely proud of the cooperation between Victoria College and UHB. I will give a lot of credit to that, to Dr. Hines and Dr. Morgan. One of the reasons this is important, and Dr. Hines will address it to us, is the cooperation we have reached now on the library. We're gonna have a fantastic library with tremendous tax savings to the people of Victoria because of that cooperation. And the second item is the can-do act, the can-do spirit of this town. You know, we recently had an economic development project, we'd done great things. development project, we'd done great things. We didn't get it, but this town was a hundred percent behind it. There were other communities that fought each other for it. They had a better location than we did, and they won out. But Victoria did it together. This is an economic opportunity, economic development opportunity, that is one that just cannot be passed. We need to work together and try to find a way to make this happen. My grandfather always said, you know, it takes a skilled carpenter build a good barn, but any old jackass can kick it down. Well, what we're, what these guys are trying to do is build a good facility out there that Victoria can be proud of. Anybody can kick the tires and say, well, what about this, what about that? But that's going to be a good barn out there. And I think you want to proudly say one day, I helped. You know, I won't, you know, a year from now, five years from now, twenty years from now, you can tell your children and grandchildren, I helped develop this university and this asset to Victoria. You don't want to say, or you don't want others to say that you helped stop that project. So, I agree with Farmer Mayor. We agree on some things, and not on others, but on this one, we do. Let's think out a strong message to this community, to the state, that Victoria's open for business. We're ready, when we see an opportunity, to grasp it and run with it. And a six-o vote would be a fabulous declaration to everybody to know that Victoria is open for business, and when they see an opportunity, they know how to develop it.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Good afternoon. David Hines, 713 Champions Row, Victoria, 77904. Would echo what, what Ron had talked about and would simply say, and simply tell you what I've heard Vic Morgan say many, many times, what, what benefits the University of Houston, Victoria, benefits Victoria College. He says it the other way around, but that's the reality. An investment in higher ed, you know, you know I'm going to tell you, an investment in higher education is an investment in the entire community, is, is a great boost to economic development. That's proven over and over again historically. And I would, I would just say that the last thing I'd like to say is that there is a, there is a safety issue at hand. Vic has talked about it before. Victoria College is being brought more into that conversation because of the nature of the relationship between the University of Houston, Victoria, and Victoria College. We will enter into a little bit different library agreement, and when they build their library across the street, I expect the foot traffic from Victoria College students across that, across that street to, to be a big part of the traffic. So not only will it be UHV students going back and forth, it'll be Victoria College students going back and forth as well. And just appreciate your consideration, and thanks for your time. Y'all have a good afternoon.
Thank you. Citizens' communication still open? See anyone else getting up? Okay. So we'll go ahead and close citizens' communication, move into the rest of our meeting. I wanted to, real quick, before we do our ordinances, just give informational responses to the gentleman that spoke earlier. Perhaps he'll watch this meeting later on TV, but he might have to remind me. I know the tree limbs specifically, I know we collected more last week when we did the whole year prior, so we're working fast as we can. And we don't have a specific schedule as to what neighborhoods come first, or...
Well, you know, the, the city's divided into four quadrants, and they're working outside inward. And as of yesterday, we collected seventy-three thousand cubic yards of brush. We estimate we have a total of two hundred thousand, so. I think, you know, last week they were averaging about six thousand cubic yards a day. I think they're up to seven or eight now. And Daryl, I don't expect you to say a whole lot. So, but except for we are picking up brush.
I'll keep it brief.
Thank you.
Between eighty-five hundred and about ninety-two hundred yards a day.
Yeah.
Cubic yards.
What do we normally collect in a year?
Twenty-two thousand.
About twenty thousand, so they're, they're doing that in a couple of days. And, and we've got, we've got six trucks with trailers working in town, plus some singles. So, you'll see eight different trucks. Most of them have a, a big trailer with them, and we're working in all council districts. Some places we can't get to because of wires, still. We tried to get into Greens Edition this morning and had some trouble, so we've had to pull them back until some of those wires get raised up.
Just a couple of informational points. You do not have a definitive date to start recycling again. That's fine. I just want to repeat that. I've noticed limbs on the hiking bike trail. I don't know how you're going to get over there. Well-meaning people stacked them along that outfall. So I'm just, yeah, it's a lot, too, so.
I'll have to go by and take a look.
Let me think of what. I think that's it, so. Okay. The permit question, just, just for clarification, I believe, Thomas, you reminded me, the waiving of the permit fees, I was able to do alone, and I thought I did that Monday following the hurricane. And then this council renewed it. It was slightly modified.
That's correct.
So it was actually, and I don't think the paper said that. I thought it was a minor detail, but it actually was the Monday following, right?
But it was for home, the homestead.
I just went back and looked at that date, and it was August 31st was the date you signed that, that order.
It was a little sooner than what was generally known, yeah. Okay.
But it was for the homestead. The renewal was for the homestead.
Correct. Prior to that, it was all of it.
It was, part of that was all that.
And there's electrical permits.
And electrical.
It was for electrical, yes.
Right. So there's a few people I do realize that were very active right after the hurricane and went down there and got them as soon as we opened.
And we refunded those as well.
You refunded those?
I don't know where they, are they in the process, but we have initiated refunds. Of course, if they went to the contractor, if the contractor paid for it, then the refund goes to the contractor. So any homeowner that did pay their contractor, and a permit fee was included in that, would need to talk to their contractor about getting that fund.
Okay, okay. And that was in place for, I guess, about four days before we modified it here as a group. Okay.
Thank you, Jim.
And, yeah, that, that's good enough for, I just want to give some factual answers. We can move into ordinances now.
Item C1 is an ordinance approving and adopting a budget for operating the municipal government of the City of Victoria for fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2017, and ending on September 30th, 2018. Appropriating money for the various funds and purposes of such budget, including appropriations of money to pay interest and principal sinking fund requirements on all indebtedness, repealing all conflicting ordinances and appropriations, providing for severability, and declaring an effective date.
We'll open a public hearing on C1. If anyone would like to speak to the budget specifically, now would be the time. Okay, seeing no one jump up, I'm going to close that public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adopt C1.
Second.
A motion and second, or is there any consideration or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Same? Okay. Ayes have it. C2.
C2 is a resolution ratifying the property tax rate.
The new increase reflected in the budget for operating the municipal government of the City of Victoria for fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2017, and ending September 30th, 2018, as defined by Texas Local Government Code, Section 102.007(c), and declaring an effective date.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing on C2. Anyone would like to speak to the tax rate? Specifically, now would be the time. Seeing no one, close, close the public hearing on C2. Entertain a motion.
Move to adopt C2.
Okay, motion and second. Any questions?
Looking for a second, now a second.
We, we got a second.
Go.
Yeah, okay.
Join.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, C2 passes. C3.
Item C3, Mayor and Council, you remember, a motion to approve the tax rate must be made in specific statutory language, which I've placed at each of your desks. C3 is an ordinance setting the tax rate at a total rate of zero point five nine five two dollars per one hundred dollar of property valuation, and levying a tax upon all property subject to taxation within the City of Victoria, Texas, for the 2017 tax year, for the use and support of the municipal government of the City of Victoria, providing for the assessment and collection of taxes, apportioning said levy amount to the various funds and items for which revenue must be raised, including providing a sinking fund for the retirement of the bonded debt of the city, providing for penalties and interest for delinquent taxes as prescribed by the Texas Tax Code, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for savings, and declaring an effective date.
We'll open the public hearing on C3. If anyone would like to speak to this item, now would be the time. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move that the property tax be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of zero point five nine five two dollars, which is effectively a one point seven one percent increase in the tax rate.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions?
This is not adjusted for inflation.
Right. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, ayes have it. C4.
C4, Mayor and Council, there's a substituted version of this ordinance that fills in the blank and the dollar figure that you had in your original packet. And this is an ordinance amending the 2016-2017 City of Victoria General Fund and VES Fund budget to provide funding in the amount of seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand four dollars for the replacement of a pumper truck and an ambulance for the fire department, repealing all conflicting ordinances and providing for savings, and declaring an effective date.
I'll open the public hearing on C4, if anyone would like to speak to this item. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any questions? Anyone, everybody understands what's happening here? Okay. CM1 was a little bit detailed, but very good. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. No consent agenda, and we have our one resolution.
This is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to execute an agreement with the University of Houston, Victoria, to sell two lanes of Ben Wilson Street from Red River to Airline for the purpose of rebuilding the road to allow for a redesign, which will address the safety of pedestrians and the flow of traffic, and declaring an effective date.
Counsel?
I move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion, questions?
First, I want to thank, I had a bunch of questions that I submitted to Ms. Garrett, and they got answered by both the university and the city. Appreciate y'all taking the time to answer those. One question, I don't think I posed properly, which was question number five. I believe everybody had a copy of this. It was just a scenario that I was asking about. If a bus exits, exits the UHV West entrance and turning right onto Ben Wilson and flows stopped, gets in a breakdown scenario, or gets hit by another vehicle, what happens to traffic? And it proposed, the answer stated that the optical reader at the light at Ben Will, Ben Wilson and Red River would allow traffic to flow. That's, I don't think I properly worded my question, because that won't get traffic flowing. There's no way around a wreck at that intersection, you know, that entrance. So, I'm okay with where it is. I just don't think that there's an answer to it that you could provide, that you couldn't get an ambulance around it in an emergency situation. They would have to turn around and go a different direction, which is not unlike when a train stops on the tracks on Ben Wilson on the other side.
They, they have to maneuver a lot during the day anyway with accidents.
Yes.
They'll figure it out.
But I just wanted to highlight that in my question as a risk. The other, I had some other questions in here, and it dealt with what the market value is for land and the market value of a roadway. Nowhere in this proposal that's been brought forward has there been any purchase price ever offered for the land or roadway from the taxpayers. They provided values in my answers, fair market value for the land that's being transferred to the university's one point three two six million, and the existing roadway, if, for those two lanes, curb and gutter, would be nine hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. And then, of course, the estimated construction cost of five million, nine hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and seven dollars. So it's my opinion, if we're talking about in this resolution, the conditions for, for this land transfer, that the land cost and the actual improvements that taxpayers own and have put on that road be included in the purchase price, so it'd be a little over eight point two million for that purchase price. What's proposed right now is just the construction cost, so it's, the city's given up something, and there's nothing reimbursed to the taxpayer. Of course, with this project, we know that we're going to have a future capital improvement that's going to be needed under Red River Street for the drainage. I think we talked about that being probably five million dollars.
For the box cover, I don't have an idea. Ken, do you have an estimated cost to the box cover in Red River?
Approximately seven million dollars.
Seven million.
Seven million, so.
Now, that's there either with this project is done or not, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Well, this is going to exacerbate it. We, it's going to be more, more impervious cover.
It's less lanes, it's less impervious.
There'll be retention also.
What's that?
There'll be some detention as well.
And they talk of it. I haven't seen it yet in their plan that they submitted. They submitted a master plan for that. But the city is pitching in, you know, we're going to make improvements at some point when we have that money to do seven million dollars worth of work to help with the drainage, because we know it's an issue down there. So I would like to see the taxpayer get reimbursed for the land and the improvements on that roadway. Just if you and I had gone out and bought a piece of property with a building on it, and we wanted to build something else on it, you'd still have to buy that building that's on there and that piece of property. They've purchased from Victoria College that corner lot, which gives us good analysis, and the adjacent corner lot as well. So, and then also, one other condition, everyone seems to be concerned about the traffic and how it's going to be affected. The easiest thing we can do right now is request that barricades be set up to mimic the traffic flow. Easily be done for a month, show that there is or there isn't going to be a true issue. We don't have to rely on just the engineering analysis and study on it. And I'd like to see that as part of the condition for the proposal, and that's Section 1 of the resolution.
Oh, and let's start over the first one. Let me make sure I clear your first objection. With the Hawks Light and the coordination with the Red River Light, is that correct?
The first one was if a bus or delivery truck was leaving the driveway out of the west side of the campus, broke down, got hit by oncoming traffic, something like that. There's no way, until that wreck is cleared, that anything can pass by.
There is a lane in front of where a bus would normally stop, that it pulls off, that traffic would normally flow right past it. It's right there in front of the administration building, or what's the name of that building? The one that's presently there.
Right, but what I'm saying is it's pulled out of the driveway and gets T-boned. It's not going to get...
Well, that would be true anywhere in the city. It shuts down everything when that happens.
Not in the current configuration.
Well, even on the Verro, when somebody gets T-boned, it shuts down three to six lanes of traffic, so. I'm not sure I fully buy that objection. It's just, whether it's one, one lane or ten lanes, it seems to be the same. Second objection was?
Purchase price.
I'm sorry?
The purchase price.
We gave land, I'm not sure what the value of it was, to Victoria College for the continuing education. We gave a street to St. Joe so that they could build that shelter that was used recently, and also use it as an auditorium.
Well, St. Joe paid for that.
St. Joe paid for that street.
Yes, they did. And in this respect, we've done this many times with Citizen Medical Center and Ditar Hospital, all within the last ten years, twelve years maybe. And so this is not uncommon. The value of the land has been driven up by the University of Houston in purchasing projects as it is. I'm not sure how pertinent that would be. If you picked a number similar to what we had sold other streets for, perhaps that would be something we could go on.
Yeah, I'm not convinced that the way we sold the other streets was proper. I don't think it reimbursed the taxpayer properly. And if it was so good to give away land, why did Victoria College sell that piece of property to University of Houston, Victoria, and not give it to them?
Well, we're getting out of scope of this, I think, I don't, of this decision. But, Jan, did you have?
Well, I was just going to comment that January 19th, 2016 minutes is really where we first talked about gifting. And at that time, as I recall, the thought was that we would give the, the entire street to the university, and they would do the development... to the university, and they would do the development. Then the project changed because of regulations that controlled the university and controlled the spending of the money, but that had always been part of the thought. The university was going to pay for the reconstruction, and was not going to pay for the purchase of the land. The way the finances are being worked through, it has the same impact. So the way I see it, it's really not a change from what we discussed initially.
I just want to, this is a revenue neutral, yes, no, to the city? Okay. And I think that you disagree, and that's okay.
I disagree with that. I think it's transferring of assets away from the taxpayers to someone else without compensation.
You're also transferring a liability.
What liability is that?
To repair it.
If you want to, yeah, no, did you want to make an amendment?
Yes, I would like to make an amendment.
So we can...
All right. Make an amendment to the resolution for item 1B. Delete the semicolon at the end, add a comma, put the fair market value of the real estate and the fair market value of the improvements on the real estate.
1B, where are we?
Page one of two of the resolution.
Do you need to have an "and" at the beginning of your clause?
Jan, sorry.
You can, "and the fair market value," and the fair market value.
Show us where you mean... You mean for the fair market value that you're describing to be in addition to the cover, covering the cost of reconstruction?
Yes.
Not instead of? Okay, so that's "and."
Yeah, you could, "and the fair market value of the real estate and improvements on the real estate."
We need clarification on where we're at.
Yeah, A1 telling us where you, A1.
A1 is a resolution we have in there, it's page one of two, all the way at the back of the packet for that one, is the resolution.
I may not have the modified one here.
In what number are you under, Jan?
If you go all the way back of the highlighted stuff?
Yeah, we're under the actual resolution.
1B.
1B, okay.
The purchase price would be the cost of reconstruction plus...
Thank you, okay. Tell you guys, she... Right here, in the far back, that, keep going, Sherman. Just want to make sure we're all on the same page here.
It's the next to last page of the packet.
Yeah. Okay. Everybody see that? And read it again for us, somebody, one of you?
Okay, B would read, "The purchase price for the real estate shall be no less than an amount approved by the city's Director of Finance to cover the cost of reconstruction, based on the engineering estimates for completing the project in accordance with Design Plan 3A presented to council on July 18th, 2017, plus the fair market value of the real estate and the fair market value of the improvements on the real estate."
Now, that would, that could possibly, we would net revenue out of that, would you, make sure I understand? So we would have money left over theoretically under that situation?
The citizens would be reimbursed for the land and the roadway that they are selling to the university.
Well, I mean, but we would have money left over, right?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's okay, that's what you're saying. I just want to make sure, it's just two ways of looking at it. I understand you'd say citizens would be reimbursed, that again means we'd have money left over, okay. Okay, so there's been a motion to amend presented, it would need a second. Going once, everybody understands, going twice. Okay, I don't see anyone willing to second that, so that will die for lack of a second.
Okay, I have a Second Amendment, item D. I would like to add to that one, to read, "The proposed traffic and roadway changes be first tested by installing barricades to simulate the modifications."
To be clear, there is not currently an item D on the list. This would be a new item on the list.
Okay. Do I see a second anywhere? I do not see a second, okay. So that will die for lack of a second. It's okay, you're doing fine, I understand.
Couldn't present my arguments well enough, I guess, but appreciate y'all listening to me.
Sure, sure.
I do agree. There you go. That would be nice to be compensated, and come out on a positive rather than revenue neutral. I absolutely understand that. Despite that not happening, I do believe in this project. I believe that it adds a layer of safety to our students and pedestrians. I believe that it adds for a great potential economic growth for our city, and I do believe that it'll add an aesthetic presence to our city, something that I believe would serve our city well. There are certainly positives and negatives in regards to this project, but I see a great opportunity to make a positive, long-lasting impact, if we're willing to allow it.
Thank you.
I agree, the aesthetics are easy. That part's the easy part. I really think that the taxpayers should be reimbursed. I know I lost that vote, but once again, the taxpayers should be reimbursed for what they're selling to the university or what they're giving to the university, so...
On your second motion to amend, Jan and I have been down through this study, what, six or seven times now on the MPO, which I serve as chairman of, and we've heard those objections, and engineering studies say it's going to work. Put up barricades to prove it'll work, I'm not sure I can go with that, because we've already been down through it so many times, engineering study after engineering study, modifications, renditions. It's like, Jesus, let's get through with this. I'm sorry, this, it's been a long old road for me.
Understood. And I just want to point out, and I know it has been a long time, and make sure everyone understands, it's not necessarily the seven of us that drug it out, there were reasons. I know the university needed time to do a lot of things, too, and it's just taken a long time. So there's no necessarily, I don't think, fault with anybody about that. This is, the wheels of progress move slowly. Any further discussion, item? You okay, Mr. Bucknight?
Hi.
Good discussion, appreciate it a lot, appreciate your thoughtful comments, and that's the way the system works. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, item passes, thank you. Do we have any further business?
No, but I would like to comment on the water system.
I was about to do, you go ahead. Well, there was a comment made about, how did he...
What was it contaminated with?
It was never contaminated, and every bit of that water was treated the entire time, and that's very important. And we will have time to talk about that on October 15th, is that when?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth? In October, we're having a work session to talk about all the hurricane stuff, so just, that's an important clarification. Thank you for bringing it up. We are adjourned, thank you.